All right. Call to, hey. Hey. Call to order, the January 21st, 2020, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. All right, we got a bunch of continuance requests, so we'll do those first. Two-ten halt, continued public hearing, two-ten halt road, MMD shooting, have requested a continuance until March 24th. Can we get a motion to approve that continuance request?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Sixteen hundred Osgood and all of the various special permit site subdivision have also requested a continuance. Are we still good on timing on the subdivision, Monica?
Yes, they've given us an extension. So, let me see, once the data takes, we are still good.
Okay. So can we get a motion to continue sixteen hundred Osgood, sixteen hundred Osgood LLC, application for definitive subdivision, application for site plan review, application for site plan review with Hillwood Enterprise, and application for large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems until February 4th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, that's continued as well. We also got a request from Avalon, Four High Street Avalon Bay, application for subdivision A, definitive master plan special permit to continue. The test pit data has not come back yet, which they need for conservation, which we need to be able to move forward, because that's not come back yet, they've asked for continuance because there wouldn't be much to talk about today. So, can we get a motion to continue that until February 4th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. For those keeping track at home or for anyone here, we've continued two-ten halt road MMD shooting, we've continued sixteen hundred Osgood Street, which is, and, which is Amazon, and we've continued Four High Street Avalon Bay, all until February 4th. Okay, so if anyone's here for that, those have all been continued. Okay. Start at the top, Hundred Willow Street, Brian Ganjimi Gourmet Specialty Foods, request to establish a bond for remaining work prior to issuance, issuance of certificate of occupancy. Anyone here on that one, or are you telling us what's going on on that, Monica?
I do not see anyone here for this, but I can tell you what's going on. He passed that on, it's just some bullet points there. So, back in April, you approved a site plan review special permit to allow for improvements to the parking area, the exterior of the building. They were also expanding other parking, they went from nine spaces to fifty-four. This was for an office slash, we'll call it a, like, kind of food manufacturing company. They've completed most of the work, they've installed their sub-surface infiltration system. They still need to do some improvements, which include the top coat, striping of the top coat, landscaping, so that'd be any of the plantings associated with the, with the rain garden, trees, things of that sort. They need to do the final grading of their vegetated infiltration basins, which are located on the front of Willow Street, and they'll be installing some trees and shrubs. They've asked for a bond of thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the remaining work. And so, they can't do plantings or finish the retention pond until probably the spring. So, they're looking for a full occupancy permit. We've issued them a temporary one, which just allowed them to use the, the building for office and production. We signed off on that on January 2nd, however, it will expire February 1st. So, we can either keep issuing them temporaries, or we can, or you can approve the establishment of a bond to give them a full CIO with the understanding that, you know, in this, when the water, when the weather warms up, that they'll complete the, the projects.
I take it by the fact that this is here, they approve the bond, they're, they're in favor of the bond approach?
Yes, it was their contractor who priced out the, the improvements and said that it would be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to do the work.
So, my guess, I have two questions.
Yes.
One is, has DPW looked at this to just test the estimate? I mean, you want it to be a reasonable number, yeah?
Yes, I forwarded the information to DPW, and I haven't heard back from them, so I'm not quite sure if they're on board with this number or not.
Yeah, I mean, other than the retention pond, it looks pretty simple, but I, sometimes a retention pond can get fairly complicated. The other thing is, is it gonna be a cash bond?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thirty-five, seems like a pretty good number for what's, wow.
It would basically be more, like, additional funds going towards the performance guarantee bond, like they typically do.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fine.
Questions, comments? Seems okay to me, okay. So can we get a motion to, so consider it as a minor modification?
Right, I, I, basically, it's substantial change.
A motion to allow insubstantial change for a thirty-five thousand dollar bond for the remaining work as outlined in the staff report. And will allow a certain occupancy pending the posting of the bond.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Zero, Grape Pond Road, Lot 3, Grape Pond Road, Susan Papalia, discussion of common driveway permit. Come on up. Wherever you feel most comfortable.
I've almost, I've.
Hold on a sec, hold on a sec, hold on a sec. All right.
I'm passing out the timeline of the property. Okay.
All right, why don't you start by just giving us your name and address?
Susan Papalia. The property is, I call it Lot 3, Grape Pond Road.
And since you've been here, we've had a couple of discussions about this, correct?
Yes, and also, I think an engineer was involved at, at one time, Haynes Engineering. I think that's on the, Monica put together some paperwork.
All right, do you have, Monica, do you have an extra copy?
Yes.
Did I get that? Could we just take a minute to read this?
A couple of.
Hold on, let, let's take a minute just to read this, so that way we're better educated.
I'll bring up the, you know, plans so you can see where it's located.
All right. Thank you for this report, Monica. I says, what would you like to tell us?
Well, well, I've, I've owned the property for fifteen years. We, we were gonna build a house on it, we live on Coachman's Lane, we still do. In the interim, after, just after we bought this land, another house on my street came available on the market, and it had a bedroom on the first floor. And my mother was in her nineties, and we decided to go with that house and not build a house here.
Since you bought this one. So someone else applied for the driveway permit and all that before you? I see the application for the common driveway for the lot was in nineteen ninety-nine, so that's before you bought the house?
Before we bought the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, fast forward, two houses were constructed in, on the common driveway, and they're presently there now. And one got sold just a few years ago, and just within the last few months, it just rented for thirty-nine hundred a month. And I was told, because I didn't take the vegetation or mow the driveway, that vegetation had grown there, and I'd have to make a smaller footprint on the house, which is, is not an issue. I was gonna build a fifty-seven hundred square foot house, I'm glad I didn't. But I picked the best lot, I've been a realtor in town for forty years. And I, and this lot goes up on a slight knoll, and it has a flat backyard, and I was told at the time that I could put a pool in, before I even hired O'Sullivan Architects to, to make a plan for the house, I was told I could put a pool and a, and a good-sized house, fifty-seven hundred square foot house, there, with a bedroom on the first floor, to accommodate my mother. So, when that didn't happen, I just let it sit there for a while, and then, when, a few years ago, when we were older and we decided to sell, sell the lot, I had some, a couple of builders that were interested in building a house there, and one of them, he spent quite a lot of money trying to get it, and they told him that a fire truck wouldn't be able to get down the street if there were a fire. But yet, the lot that we own is in between two existing houses. So, my, when you would go in Grape Pond Road, there's a house, they would have to go by, and to get to this house, they'd have to go by my house. And they gave building permits to the two other houses. But now, I'm having trouble getting a building permit on the best lot, and on the highest lot, with the flattest backyard.
So what are you looking for?
I'm looking for you to say, I can, I can sell a lot that I, that I, I bought for four hundred and something thousand fifteen years ago, and then spent thousands of dollars of engineering, and they're telling me now I can't put a house there, and Monica said I'll probably have to get the engineer and get an attorney involved. I said, why? There were two houses on either side, I don't understand it. And I'm in the real estate business, it just doesn't make any sense to me, that now the, the, the road won't accommodate a fire truck, and right, if you walk through the backyard of this house, there's a hydrant on Winter Street. And I actually had that house listed about four or five years ago. I didn't wanna mess around with the people and say could have an easement, I mean, I didn't think it was very professional, so I just sold the house as it was. But right, if, if you go right in the back, there's a hydrant. So I would think that the town would be able to get in that way if they thought that it was too dangerous to go in the other way.
The difficulty, at least, that I'm seeing, is that, I'm sympathetic with what you're saying, I think what you're saying makes sense. I'm not sure how the other two houses got built, if they're proper or not proper, I'm not really sure we can consider that. But I don't, if we wanted to do what you're asking, I'm not sure how we would even go about doing it, because we don't have any applications or anything like that before us. There's nothing we can, there's no permit application that we could stamp or say, okay, not okay. I think we need something before us to, to act on.
I think that, I think.
And I don't know that we, granted, I'm just saying, right now, we're talking about it, but there's nothing even before us to act on. It seems to me that we would need some sort of application, maybe a common driveway.
Our jurisdiction to do what Ms. Papalia is asking, I mean, just, you know, I mean, right, there's no application. I, I mean, I think the problem is that all of the prior approvals have expired long ago, and if you wanna build in that lot, you've gotta figure out what approvals are required and some applications for it. That's the only way you're gonna be able to do it.
That I need to do, but I believe that about a year ago, when the, the guys that were gonna do it, and they built houses, they, I think, talked to Monica, and they wanted to do what was necessary, and they hired Haynes Engineering, and they came to a roadblock.
Well, I don't know if it's, yeah, there's this mysterious they. If, if you want, I'm pretty sure what you need to do here is, if you wanna build in this lot, you gotta come in for a watershed special permit, and you have to come in for a common driveway special permit.
As well as an access to the legal frontage.
Right, yeah.
One of the things, and I, I tried to put that in the, in the town, in the, in the timeline, was to explain that back in two thousand and five, there was an issue in terms of how to make the common driveway accessible to two houses, but separate it from Lot 2. And one of the roadblocks was that there was supposed to be a three-foot berm, landscape berm, that then basically created one driveway going to Lot 2, and two dri, and a separate driveway, a common driveway servicing Lots 3 and 4. Under the town bylaw, your only, only two lots are permitted on a common driveway. As of right now, as constructed, you have basically three lots that are servicing a common driveway. With that, back a year ago, the, the Innises filed an application for watershed special permit, and when we went and did our discovery, we found out that the common driveway had never been, the decision had never been recorded. The landscape had changed, the wetlands grew, so there was gonna, you have to do a new delineation, and it looked as though the, the opportunity to build a proper crop, common driveway may be compromised because of the, the wetlands. As you know, wetlands tend to grow rather than stay the same. So they ended up withdrawing their application from that. So, what, what I think this probably warrants is the filing of a common driveway permit to allow us to do a proper evaluation of the site as is today. You also have. Yes, yes, and they currently have open permits that they're having trouble closing on, on Lots 4. So there's a number of outstanding issues that somehow we need to resolve in order to, to move forward with this.
Yeah, I, I suspect even on top of that, given that there's two lots in play today, who knows whether the, all the documents include the proper easements and stuff to provide access for other over the frontage and stuff? So there's a lot of stuff that's open here, yeah.
Easement documentation, however, the easement documentation excluded basically maintenance of lights that were supposed to be in the driveway. There aren't driveway lights, there's, there's several things that just weren't accounted for with, even within the easement documentation. So it's basically a lot of cleanup work that would be required to make everything as it should be.
Why, I think in the end, the easiest approach is, as you suggested, D10 and Monica, is you just come back with a filing that addresses all of the things that need to be filed. So if there's three watershed, common driveway, and access not over the frontage, then there's three special permit, uh, applications.
You're gonna need to file for those?
And then, planning, if you can start those filings, planning can meet with you and whomever you hire to discuss the feasibility. Right, that's fine.
Where they're a little bit familiar with it, Haynes Engineering.
I mean, it looks like it's gonna take some work, but it's not, it's not impossible, but we just, there's nothing we can act on now.
And, and, but, on a build of a fifty-seven hundred square foot house would be, so building a small house, and that's not an issue.
Okay, so start with that, and.
Okay, and Monica, will you write down what I need? Because then I will give that to the engineer, and we'll start working on that.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Master, well, let's come back, we'll go, we'll do, let's do, we'll come back to master plan input to implementation. Let's go to three fifteen Turnpike Street, Verizon Wireless. Anyone here for that? Come on up.
McLean Middleton Law Firm, just babysitting this project to the end in place of my colleague who passed away at the end of last year. Monica was kind enough to send us a, a copy of a draft decision today, as well as an update of a peer review report that your consultant did of our supplemental filings, and a couple, aside from a couple of typos, we had no qualms with the, with the draft decision.
Did we close this public hearing yet? Okay, still open, okay. Any more information you need to provide to us?
I don't think so.
Okay, any members of the public have any information, questions, comments about the wireless facility on the roof of a building at Merrimack?
Nope.
Anyone here?
Yeah, during the last period, the two outstanding things were some questions that the fire department had, and then we were waiting for a final review or final clearance letter from the peer review consultant, which came today.
Get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed, we'll now review the decision.
It's like the numbering got off track a little bit. But, on, it's labeled twelve, but it's after paragraph twenty-one. It refers to SPGA, I don't think that's defined, it probably should just say Planning Department. I know it means Special Permit Granting Authority, but probably should just say Planning Department.
Correct, or Planning Board, actually.
Or.
Get a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job. Uh, okay, Osgood. All right, um, Master Plan Implementation Committee. Okay. So, as everyone knows, we did the master plan, and I think one of the great, good, really good things that came out of it was the Board of Selectmen created a Master Plan Implementation Committee. The purpose of that committee is to try to actually make the master plan happen. So instead of, I've seen master plans in other cities and towns, and hey, look, we did this master plan, put it on the shelf in the planning department, twenty years later, hey, look, there's a master plan. So, the committee was established to try to effectuate some of the ideas in the master plan, and also to analyze and grade how we're doing, right? So if our goal is to create more housing, are we doing that? If our goal is to create more connectivity amongst sidewalks and downtowns, are we actually accomplishing those goals? And how are we gonna set about measuring those things? So I think it's a great idea, and now we're in the implementation phase of the implementation committee. We have two roles that, one of our members is, is going, is going to be part of the committee, and then we need to pick two other people, non-planning board members, to be a part of that. So I think first, for our nominee, I would nominate Kelly to be our committee person. She comes here, serves, doesn't get to vote on a lot of stuff, I think this is a way to be involved, lives close to the downtown, has young kids, so is invested in kind of the future of the downtowns. I think she would be a good person, a good fit for this committee. So that would be at least my nomination, if anyone else has.
If she's amenable to it, I would second that.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Uh, so Kelly's not nominated, all right?
She's on the hook.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Great. Um, okay. Thoughts on other members, people that we could put on? I know, Aaron, you had mentioned maybe, at least to me, mentioned some people that were on the master plan committee. I think that's a good idea as a place to start. But if anybody has any ideas of people that they might, or even how to go about thinking about picking people? You know, what, what kind of backgrounds are we looking for? Are there any individuals?
It's hard to say without knowing the makeup of the rest.
Of the other people on, on the board.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, you're right.
But somebody that's interested, I, I, you gotta start with that.
I do think that there needs to be somebody that's involved with this, has a sense of institutional memory, going back some period of time to get some idea of things that have been done, things that have worked, things that have not worked, how people responded to different issues. I mean, that's, that's invaluable, so it's, I mean, my suggestion, a little bit, is sort of like one of the old timers, believe it or not, like somebody like Charlie Salisbury, or Ben Osgood, or, you know, Jim LaFawn, somebody like that's been around a long time, has been really vested in the community, I think. I don't know if they're willing to do something like that.
So I just wanna voice an objection to the term the whole time.
So I, I like that idea, the only thing I'm, I wouldn't say wary of, is, at least some of the people you named, they're, they're all great resources, but they also, and they are all willing to speak their mind, but at the same time also have very strong personalities and some strong opinions on things, which is good, but also can sometimes be overwhelming. So I think we just need to be cognizant of that in our selections. I think we want people who are going to give their opinions and lead and guide, but also be open to other ideas. So I think.
And it, and it also cuts both ways. I think, you know, I, I've lived in this community for so, seven and a half years, and I, I think there's people like me who have moved here, who are making this their home, that, you know, they, they, they see the future where they want North Andover to be. And it may not be exactly where somebody who's had a strong history here. So I think it cuts, I think both experiences are about.
We get two, so maybe that's a really, I mean, I don't think it has to be either, but I think maybe we could do both. I think it's a great, one person has, not necessarily our formal criteria, but some, we could look for someone who has good institutional knowledge, who's been around, who can tell us, hey, we had this master plan before, or we had this idea to increase housing, and then we built this, and this, and this, and that worked, and that didn't work. But also someone who's newer to town, who said, hey, I came here because of, you know, the schools.
Likes what's here, but sees also, uh.
Yeah, so I think.
And I think we have a volunteer. That's what I thought I heard.
Kelly's already done it.
So why don't we?
I like that idea, have both, the.
Something that's passionate for, too. Like, someone who's passionate about the growth and change, whatever that is, and following it through.
It'd be nice if that person might be either a stakeholder somehow, a small business owner in town, or something like that, as a possibility.
Well, Jim fits that.
Okay, great, so, so just those kind of things, just someone who has added stakes, then also, or just a parent, something like that, my younger person. Okay, so can we somehow put out an invitation to people to contact us if they're interested? I mean, contact people that you know that fit these criteria, fit these ideas? But I would like to somehow.
Has it been, like, the general thing that the committee's forming, has it been all socialized? I mean.
This, I, this is, the first I heard of it was, I got an email a week or two ago from Town Administration saying, hey, we're putting this together, you need to pick somebody. So, I don't think so.
I've seen it for a while, I don't remember where I've seen it, whether it's in the Selectmen Ministers, but it's been out there, it's been floated for. I think it was also posted on the town's website, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious. But the dilemma with communication is always, who sees it? As we've heard recently and in the past, people who come here for different applications that are before us claim that, hey, they, this is really the first, they've heard about something. And so, that's always, I know the eternal struggle is, how do you best communicate to the community that, you know, people have busy lives and such, and planning and town affairs may not be their focus.
Let me ask, would you like me to go back to, you know, the town manager's office, and maybe say, you know, you've selected one person, but there's a number of qualities that you're looking for? You know, could you put out another request for, for members? And maybe try to talk about more like what's been done to solicit, you know, participation? And maybe try something different? Like, I don't know what their ideas were in terms of how to gather.
Yeah, no, I just, just want something that we can post, that, that we can share ourselves as well, put on town website, put on the planning board website, that we can have, that we can share with various social media, that says, "Planning Board is seeking two members for the Master Plan Implementation Committee." And then just a brief.
Kelly just mentioned the water bill.
Right.
Yeah, there's always, there's always little nuggets in there.
And just a brief, just a brief description, so that we could send it out, and we can, you know, talk with people. So if we could do that, you know, relatively soon, so we could get out, maybe in the next meeting, try to appoint two more people.
Sure.
Okay.
One more, you already have.
Well, we need to appoint three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have one, we need to appoint two, two more.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so we pointed our member, now we need to appoint two, I'll say civilians, two non-planning board members. Okay, great. Minutes?
I have a couple items.
Oh, excellent.
Unless you wanna do minutes first.
Let's do minutes.
Great.
And then, items for announcement, or?
Questions.
Okay, but not discussion, since it's not on our.
I don't know.
Well, I, I don't, since it's not on our meeting agenda, not too much discussion. Okay, let's do minutes, can we get a, a motion to approve the January 7th, 2020, planning board minutes? Anybody? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right.
First question?
Yes.
I just have a question from the minutes.
Yes.
Where the planning board, according to the minutes, planning department, according to the minutes, was going to review the bylaw to determine if a watershed special permit is required for the playground facility adjacent to the lake at the country club.
So, do you remember that request? It was not ignored. I have never had to, and I don't see any record of approvals for actual playground equipment anywhere in the watershed. So from a historic perspective, it seems like it wasn't something that was, that has been done.
And nothing based on the proximity of the lake versus the type of structure itself that would trigger that?
No, what I could do, and unfortunately I haven't found out what materials they use, so if you wanted more information on that, I could at least ask them to provide, you know, specs on what the materials they use.
This is not the playground equipment, it's that, it's immediately proximate to the shore of the lake. So I just don't understand how that happened.
Well, was there any kind of excavation or grading required? Do we have a sense of that?
I know that, you know, a chain link fence with a leveled area that has, you know, material that you'd expect at a playground, and then the structures. Look, it's typical playground, that's not the issue. The issue is it's within, you know, feet of the lake shore.
So the question that I think it raises is, if someone were to build that today in that same spot, it seems like it would not require any permit.
Well, we do, you do have the no, the area in which you can't disturb anything, but...
Is it even a no disturbance?
Yep, so then, all right, so then it...
I mean, when I say it's within a few feet of the lake shore, I mean that literally.
So you're talking 10, 15 feet?
No, five or 10 feet.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not 50, I was thinking 50 something.
Not for playground equipment, no.
Right, so...
But we're saying that anybody can...
No, something that close to the lake shore.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Because it's... No, because as you said, you can't disturb.
Right, and so that's really my question.
And that's why I asked the question, if something had to be disturbed, or is this just going to plop down? Right, that's what I'm asking, is even if it's no disturbance or required...
So for example, the fence is dug into the ground, the playground equipment is anchored in the ground.
But as, from the discussion last meeting, it seemed like maybe that fencing was done as part of a special permit for some other project, the pool.
Was it just around the playground area, he said?
I don't know, that's what I thought I heard.
And also keep in mind that...
Because this is so separate from the clubhouse and the pool, which of course is not immediately next to the lake, that there'd be no reason to extend the fence all the way to the shoreline. And I would say that the fence posts are probably closer to five feet than 10 from the lake shore. So the issue is, I don't think we allow people to put anything that close to the lake shore. And so therefore, when the applicant was here, they provided us with what I thought was a very helpful record of here's all the permitting for things that were not even part of what they were applying for. And so it just begged the question, where's the permit for this right next to the lake shore? And they said, oh, we'll get that, but they produced nothing.
So that, Mike, that's what I'm wondering, is if there's a, say there's a house along the lake, and they were to go put in a swing set? I don't, that's what I'm asking, is would they be required to get a permit?
I've seen conservation... Way in on small projects in terms of fences that may be within their version of the no disturbance. Because typically you don't need a building permit to build a fence lower than, I think, six feet. However, conservation, I've seen the review, things that are lower than six feet, if they're that close. Planning, no conservation possibly, and it might be a small project.
And so the question, should we change that?
Maybe the question is, does conservation have any record of how that was done? Not because it's a playground, because it's so proximate.
It looks to me like it's, I don't know. But maybe within the last 20 years?
I would guess 20 years.
Yeah.
It's been there.
I think as if it was 50 years, it would probably predate it, yeah.
I would say the last 10, 12 years, guessing.
What I can do is check the conservation on this, because that seems like more of their jurisdiction for things like this. However, it is something that, you know, it is not...
But the overall question I have is, is this something we want to, should you be required to do something? If you're going to, say, put a swing set, or do anything of any substance?
I think the answer is you can't. John, am I mistaken on that, when it's...
I don't know if it's not a structure, I don't know.
I mean, if you took the thing literally, no disturbance, you have to have some disturbance. I don't see how you can. But there ends up, like it or not, in this world, sort of, in people's minds, a de minimis exception. I mean, hey, I don't want to make a big deal out of this because it's really not anything. I mean, I suspect that's what might have happened here.
I see.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know, but it...
But when we review a watershed special permit, we're always looking to determine if the project, the disturbance of the project can be, that part of the project can be put anywhere else on the property away from the disturbance zone.
Away from no disturbance.
But it's always been some, I guess my question, it's always been some sort of structure, an addition, a deck or something like that. I've never seen it be something like a playground set. I'm just wondering if it should be or not.
The occasional time where we've had scofflaws that have come in.
Right, after the...
And they have been, usually they've occurred because people went in and cleared down to the water line, which we don't want them to do, and they just did it anyway. Because in most cases, I think they honestly didn't know better. In some cases, maybe they did. But those are the only times I've seen. But I think you're right, it's usually people come to us, it's because they want to build a structure.
I just don't know if this applies.
I mean, I suspect there's a lot of people, Peter, and you probably know better than I, who do de minimis, disturbance in the non-disturbance zone. It just can't be detected because it's in somebody's backyard. It'd be pretty hard to find out.
What I'll do is I'll check the conservation, because I do recall a history of them reviewing that. So at least there's some avenue for some type of review, provided that, again, you are able to catch it. I mean, something as small as a...
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was one, do you have other items?
How are we doing on the, your letter request to the DPW to present the results of the raw lake water testing trends?
Status quo, which is not well.
Any response at all?
No. Not since, not, nothing formal. Informally, it was, they didn't have that information. And then I know you provided me some, a sample, which I just haven't had the chance to get to.
Right, which is what they provided when you were chair, John, they gave a, just a very simple...
Pretty interesting, and they measure it all the time, don't they? That's why I don't understand why they...
It's a simple line graph over five or 10 years. It's really no data analysis, it's just plotting the results of the tests they do.
I mean, at one level, it's sort of a good thing for them, because if they have a good story to tell, then why wouldn't you tell it? Maybe the story's not so good, I don't know.
Well, frankly, if it's not good, it's even more important to tell it.
It's even more important to tell us.
Correct, you don't want to not tell.
That's the kind of thing you want to have absolute transparency.
Absolutely.
I don't understand why you wouldn't do that.
So I'd like to know what the next steps are, because just unresponsive for something that they've done before that is basic.
Why don't we send another letter? And Monica, if the planning department could say that we'd like to have someone, that we're requesting someone to come to our February 25 meeting to discuss?
Let's enclose the copy, the example of the line chart that they did last time.
I'll do that, I'll send another letter with that. But I'd like the planning department to ask if someone could, that we've made the request that someone come to our meeting on the February 25th to discuss.
If we discuss water quality as it relates to...
No, to bring the updated line graph of the multi-year trend of lake sampling results.
Okay. For discussion. Okay.
Those are my two questions.
Those are two good questions, all right. Can answer, does anybody else have anything? Tomorrow, there is a downtown revitalization meeting. It is at 6:30, I want to say.
Is there any other feedback from the public on that? Or is it just physically showing up at the meeting? Are there any sort of surveys or online? I have not seen any surveys. I imagine at some point there may be. The public is always welcome to submit requests through the planning board as well, and we can distribute that correspondence to whomever can answer it. But as of right now, I haven't seen any surveys.
It's at 6:30 to 8:00 at the high school. People are interested in that, please go. Okay, anything else? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Yeah, don't get used to it.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.